So. The way it's a making motions to go to executive session.
And Rebecca.
And Rebecca second. And I spoke. I'll be I'll come out of executive session and see that. Uh, so I just need a motion to come out of executive session in terms of public session.
Make that motion. I'll second.
Perfect. All favor.
Aye.
Okay, no's and carries. I'll turn the meeting over to our clerk to issue the oath of office to our student board member.
Okay. And the deck of center, new student board member, to do the oath of office if you agree that.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully start the duties of the office of any board member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Well.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. All right, so now we can all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody have additions or changes to the agenda? We do have two presentations this evening. One is the district plan for special education and the other one is a presentation from Jim Graham, the architect from Synthesis Architects. He's going to go over our building condition survey. So. Well, then we could do Jeff first to get him. That way he can he can do a presentation on the road.
Yes.
For yours, Mr. Graham.
Thank you. Is this the mic?
That is the mic, yes.
Stay close. So I didn't know we had a new board member, so I'm going to work from memory. I gave out all my copies. That's quite all right. So. It's me, but I'm going to work from. So. Building conditions survey, state requirement, the intent of building condition survey is for state aid to amass value statewide of dollars that are needed to maintain infrastructure across the state. And they give that number to the legislature so that the legislature can budget reconstruction work and in building aid going forward. And in the case of BKW, we did a capital project since the last building condition survey. Last building condition survey was 2015. It's typically a five-year cycle, but the state shifted that cycle, so it's actually been nine years. And we did this at the end of 2014. It was actually nine years since the last building condition survey. So even though there was a project in the middle there that took care of a lot of things from 2015, you know, as infrastructure ages, now these things come up. So there's eighty-some-odd systems and components in buildings that we review. And some of those are termed health and structural. And health and structural ones are key. There's a lot of systems that are not. But health and structural, if any of those are failing or unsatisfactory, that makes your entire building fail or unsatisfactory. Okay, so for instance, if your boiler was failing, then your building would be damaged, right? So in your case, it took care of a lot of those things in the last project, so that's great. One of the things we didn't take care of was the roofs, right? At that time, the roofs had more life in them. So we can, uh, we enabled the roofs to stay and focus on the educational environment. Now the roofs are aging out, and so because the roofs are beginning to fail at this point in time, it causes both of the school buildings to have unsatisfactory ratings. Okay? Now, that's not uncommon. It's very common because there's so many systems in every school building, that there's many, many school buildings in every district that have an unsatisfactory rating. It just tells you what to focus on moving forward. Okay? But going forward, we really need to make sure that there's a plan for these rules in the immediate future.
If something's wrong, but that was part of the roof, which kind of will be in the original scope of the project.
Portions of the roof were, yes. So.
Go ahead.
I'm not going to correct you because you're correct.
But.
That is accurate. Portions of the roofs were originally included in the project.
Why they come out?
Because of cost escalations at the time, we had to make some decisions about priorities.
Right. I just wanted to be that to be clear, because some people may be like, well, I thought they did.
No.
And actually, we did talk about that at that time.
There was there was an intention to do portions of the roof at that time.
Yeah.
Uh, but those were taken out and to focus the the dollars on the educational environment. But, um, the good news is there's a lot of other things in the report that are are not necessarily pass fail, the more opinion, and over indoor learning environment, indoor air quality, things of that nature that are more architecture and engineering opinion, and those all rate very high. So those are, you know, high scores for all those across both of the school buildings. Okay? Um, that also includes humidity and moisture cleanliness and an overall comfort rate. And so, um, those score very high. Of course, um, the business office due to the district recently, the district just took that on. There's almost nothing there. That's passing. A portion of the building is occupied. That's satisfactory. And the bus garage is unsatisfactory for a number of reasons, including roof siding and other things. So in the course of, um, BCS, the raw construction value was almost $10 million for, um, things identified in the BCS. A lot of that is site work and drainage, and even tailing paving at the bus garage, building systems at the bus garage, and then a significant part of that is huge into schools. Okay, so and what really be paramount is going forward thinking about those rules. Okay? So I can go into any kind of detail or answer any questions if you would like to. Ask.
If we were to look at the roofs, how much time are we talking? Because I know we talked about it at the last capital project, so we wish another five years, because it's been five years since.
So is part of the building mission survey. A thermal scan was performed. Basically, infrared cameras were used to track where moisture is getting into the roof system. A lot of the roof, spray foam roofs, and so they begin to fail almost anywhere in that roof system all the time. And the thermal scan showed quite a bit of water infiltration, both buildings getting into the roof system. So it's only a matter of time before, um, a lot of that is spray foam, so that, you know, there's layers in that roof that inherently resist the moisture, but ultimately inflect, right? So, um, it was enough that it showed up on the thermal scan, several areas of secondary school and limited areas here, in each roof area, but in limited areas in the area here. So that's already started. And, you know, and even here, the older portion of the building, there's membrane roofs, and those are really reaching their end of life too. Uh, we've got minor instances that the thermal scan showed issues with the membrane roof, but the foam roofs are really kind of at end of life.
Are there any other systems or anything else that the BCS identified that were like that, like the roofs like that far into the end of their life?
Um, not so much in terms of the school buildings. You know, we've we did, uh, we worked with Keith Almomo and, you know, walked the buildings and walked the site, and there is concern about uh, the water system going forward, the domestic water. So, um, you've got your water treatment plant, it's just the infrastructure, getting water from the wells back to the water treatment plant. So we've got to look at that, and and that could maybe be done as part of the, when we're looking at field drainage and other site work down low, maybe we can incorporate that as well.
Okay. But you have more to go. You're good.
Now, any kind of detail you would like me to go into like that? That's, um.
Well, I guess with all the, like, there's a lot of, uh, moving parts, you know, with the, I know, looking at this, there's some some work in the bus garage and things like that, and I know that, you know, or kind of shows, I don't want to speak for everybody, but that building's kind of. We could we could spend money. This was the reason why we bought the property that we did to move the business office. That that building really is, that is at its life, and I know there's a significant significant amount of work just over there. Is there any way that you could, uh, you know, break apart the things like the roofs, things that might be immediate end-of-life issues that, you know, that we could do as a capital project? And then work on a, I don't, I don't want to use it, what, you know, master plan site, but look at the site plan. Is the bus garage in the right spot? Are there other areas that we do? I know that are part of this. We talk about drainage. We've got a softball field that half the games, if it, you know, especially this year with all the rain that we had, you know, it's a tremendous amount of work. They don't drain. Over there doesn't drain, you know, water runs up the hill. Is there any way that you could take a look and put together some options that would show, not immediate needs, but bigger, bigger, longer-term projects that incorporate some of this? So we're not throwing necessarily good money, good money at fixing bad things or just like kind of band-aiding them, but really looking out to redefine the way things look here.
Sure. So that's a great question, Matt, because it's, it's, um, how do you react to a building mission survey? This tells you the state of things in December of last year and is, you know, ultimately submitted to state at the beginning of issue. Um, it just tells you the state of affairs. So you said putting good money after bad, right? You don't want to, you don't want to do that. You want to make sure you have a solid plan going forward. So that you should be thinking in those terms. And it's also complicated by the fact that, you know, where are we going to be with bus garages and, you know, maintenance of electric buses in the next 10 years? So that enters the equation. So master plan would seem appropriate for this timing. And you never expected, you never expected to wholesale take care of everything in the building nation survey. But you have to be wise and make sure you're taking care of appropriate things in the building nation survey and looking to the future. So I would say a master plan would seem fitting, given the condition of some of your fields and, you know, you've got some prominent space across the street, but with a building that is questionable, right? You have a lot of money that you would potentially be spending just to get status quo with that building. So a lot of decisions to be made there.
I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think it would be good to see something like that where we could assess, you know, how do we want to, how do we want to break down what what's in here and not just fix? Just fix things to fix them, but really like, I don't know what we did, plan for the future.
So like if we did everything that was in here, nothing would function differently. We'll just maintain.
That is well said. We're maintaining.
So, but not necessarily what how we want things to function in 10, even five years, right? So I think it's an excellent idea to to look at what we need to do so that we don't impact our day-to-day schooling functions, but looking long-term. You know, it's maybe not a great idea to invest in asphalt next door or anything to be honest with you in that that building. As opposed to just putting that money aside and thinking long-term.
Yeah, if that's on the vision.
So the state does require school districts to, um, have a five-year plan. So following the BCS, we'd normally do a five-year plan. But I would encourage you to look further, like think about your vision, and think about 15 years. Now, some corporations think 50 years, right? And so think 15 years. And, um, you know, similar to the last capital project, it was very viewed at the future and was very successful, right? So you didn't just, you just then recreate status quo. You really looked to the future. So think 10, 15 years out on where where you want to be education automatically in terms of your site and the best possible.
All right. Well, I think, and that's, we'll wait to hear back from you. Um, to have a second conversation about some of the ideas about, you know, what what projects we should do immediate and then, you know, how do we how do we face them?
Yeah, and I think I think roofs are definitely going to be in the front part of that conversation. And that would be a phase one.
Yeah.
And going forward, we can talk a lot about either master plan and realize your current.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you put into that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Stay calm.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Now I love the podium.
By the way, don't be further, just one quick touch. This is like a public document, correct?
And what the BCS.
I didn't know if there was something that's spoilable or something that we should taxi. Let me, is everyone understanding my last?
Yeah, yeah. I don't believe it's coming.
I didn't think it would be about.
Yeah. So every fall, not that it's fall, every summer slash going into fall, um, we have our plan for special education program here in the district looks a little bit different this year just because of that planning that Ms. Dykies has been able to do for us. Um, and I won't steal any of her thunder, because she's done a tremendous job this year, um, planning forward, bringing some things back in house. Um, so I'm going to let her take it from here. I don't understand the podium, because I. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Well.
All right.
So just the beginning, it's some special ed definitions. These are just some things that we look at. Really, the one big one we look at this year was least restrictive environment. Um, what is the best placement for the kids based on their needs and what can we provide in-house? Um, we have had a lot of classifications over the past few months, but they all are staying in-house as well. So this is just a list of the classifications that we serve here at BKW. We also. Sorry. Um, we have a continuum of services. We offer all of these related services. Um, this year we had a student come back that actually received, um, orientation mobility services and TBI, teacher visually impaired, within the district, and it worked phenomenal. And she's been here all summer, inventorying over to the high school. She's transitioning over to the other building. So we're very excited with the success we had with that. So that was just something that was different this year that went better than expected. So here at BKW, we do a lot of the co-teaching classrooms. We were able to keep co-teaching at all of the elementary and most of the high school, middle school, high school. So we'll have that option still. That is one of our least restrictive environments, being that the kids are in the gen ed classrooms. You just have the extra support of the TA and a teacher. Um, we have direct consults. This is where, um, that they meet with the teams together, either direct consult or indirect, where you just, everybody talks. And that's the one thing that I think is a big part of this, is everybody talks and make sure that we're ensuring the best possible. Resource room is one of our big areas for our kids, because this is where they get that individualized, specialized treat, you know, from the teacher, anything they need, whatever course it is, they can get the help. Uh, so that works out very well. There are generally only five kids per teacher, so it is much very, very individualized. And that we have those at all grade levels. Special class I'll get to in a minute. Some of the skip that one. Um, out of district, we have actually pulled some kids back. So these are the schools that we've contracted with currently. Um, I will say we have, um, pulled some of our GOSI's kids back. We've pulled some of our approved placement street bill, Middleburg and things of that nature. We pulled a lot of those kids back. We were able to, last fall, I went out and saw everybody and basically it was like, we can do this. So, um, out of district placements are less than they are. Right there. So last year we had 99 students in district, 31 out of district for 130 total. This year we have only 28 out of district with plans to pull back another 10 potentially in the next school. Now, if it's coming, it's going to be the following school here. And then there's some, uh, of our related services, our teachers. Uh, we were able to budget this year and hopefully appoint today a half-time social worker that we're sharing with Gori so that is just going to be great. We're very excited. She's coming in, um, in two weeks to meet everybody. So we have two new classrooms to have becoming this upcoming year. Basically, we looked at the kids, we looked at what they needed, how can we support them back here? So we have two, um, we have a math class and an English class in the elementary level and then one in the middle school level. It very much mirrors our nine to 12 class that we have now. Uh, it is just a little bit smaller. Uh, those ratios are 15, 1-1. The special classes here are 12. Um, our littles, we have a one, three for English. Currently, there's two with three potential. And then in middle, the four, six, there's six of us. So and then the seven, eight, we just keep growing. We just got two more today that are going to go into those classes. So we have one teacher doing that for all of them. Um, well, all of them in the elementary and then all of them in the secondary building. So we have all of that. And as we keep growing, we're looking to pull back more. Last year at IEP meetings, we had a plan to pull back three or four more kids, but based on what they were currently integrating in their current setting, we thought it would be too much of a jump. So they're definitely on a list for next year. Um, the following next school year. Uh, so in total, we had five kids returned to district. One of them, I like to say, wet came, well, two of them came for summer program. One of them did so well in summer program, he's taking this week off. So, um, but he did so well, he's actually going to go co-taught. So he's going to skip that special class and go right to the co-taught, um, just based on the skills levels that the teacher saw in the summer. So we're very, very excited, um, to have all of that. Do you have any questions for me?
When you, when the conversations with parents that are, your students are coming back, how are those going?
They're having fun. Some are very comfortable in their placements, very worried about change. How are you going to do this? What can you do? Lots of questions that way. And we just reassure them, um, you know, working with, one of the ones was Middleburg and they, um, they worked with us, which was nice to help. They, um, our teacher went out there, she saw the program, she, you know, so we can mirror it. Others are like so ecstatic that they're coming back here.
Excellent. And then I, so I think it's not really a question, but more of a comment. Maybe a question tied at the end. So I think that the success of this, especially if you want to bring more people back or students back, is going to be those for that first month.
Yeah.
So my question is, what what type of assessment are you going to do? What, you know, what's going to be the criteria that you're going to engage? Yes, this is going well immediately, right? On, okay, not so good, you're going to change this, and then the communication.
We're going to do a lot of the same stuff we do now, observations, you know, the I ready for the, you know, the kids, see where they're at, see when they came in, see how we can support them best. Everything's going to be very individualized. So and then just using the resources, using myself, using the counselors, using the social worker for any of that kind of issues. Um, we had two of them come over the summer and it was very successful. But it was that kind of thing. I was in there every day, checking in, doing observations, making sure they didn't need anything, um, and working through that conversations.
And my question doesn't come from a place of not trusting you.
No.
I wanted to ask the question so publicly. Your answer is is that you're going to be hands-on.
Absolutely.
That's what I, and I think, and I think that's huge, you know, congratulations on putting this forward and this program and, you know, I wish you and the team nothing but success in this. I think it's great. Um, and I'm glad that there's at least half of the folks are excited to be back. And now we just, you know, I'm sure you'll do a great job of getting those others to be just as excited and.
One of the ones that was worried was one of the ones that came over summer and she was over the moon the other day when I talked to her.
Excellent.
So.
Well, congratulations to you for that.
I think, um, one of the big things is that individualized piece. I'm capable to know, to say that our director of special education knows each of these kids. We went to the store, you're in communication. Um, that's huge. I mean, that's an extremely individualized program. Distinction that I do think that success of the program might not happen in the first month. I think change takes time. It might be mid-year before we say, yes, this is working, um, especially to build up relationships in different, um, what was I thinking of? Um, like structures and processes and stuff like that. But I do think that, um, based on what you're saying, with the communication and hands-on piece, that's huge. So we appreciate you being hands-on at your level within the classes.
I want to say kudos to our entire administrative team. They all work together to make this happen. And it's because they believe all of our students deserve a place in our school community and they want us to that happen. They have worked non-stop and continue to work to make sure that this happens. It's amazing, and I have no doubt that that students will find their place here and that they'll they'll love it here and that they feel sense of community here. So I'm very excited, um, for all that's to come.
All right. Do you have any other questions?
Yep, that's.
Okay. And nobody signed up, right?
Yeah.
Casper didn't sign up? Okay, good. Um, I'll turn it over to Bonnie for Superintendent Finance.
I have not much. We just finished, and I have no presentation tonight. I figured two was probably not. Um, although we want to stay in this, you know, nice forum event. Um, we just completed our audit last week. Um, this is our second year with our new audit company. Um, they are extraordinarily thorough, which I think is probably an understatement. We love that. We want to make sure that all of our systems are running properly so that we are good stewards of taxpayer funds. Um, I am very pleased, ecstatic, in fact, to report that they finished up with us a day earlier than anticipated. They planned out the entirety, um, last week to complete the audits and by Thursday afternoon, um, they raised the statement that they did not need to come back on Friday, uh, which is excellent. Um, I heard nothing but positive things from them when they were here. They were very impressed with the things that we were able to find and improve last year. Um, and kudos to the folks in the business office for doing outstanding job with with fixing those systems that they were able to identify. And so I am, I am actually looking forward to this year's audit report, which said no one ever, but I really am. Um, because I think they've just done an outstanding job of making those those changes as needed. We have, uh, back to school night coming up August 28th. Correct? Four to six, I think it is, in my head. Four to six, 27th, I'm sorry, thank you. Something else on the 28th, 27th is welcome back night, four to six P.M. Um, kids can come in, drop off their school supplies, get the lay of the land as far as the school building is concerned. That date will go out as a reminder on Parents' Square, so people do not have to rely on my not-so-great memory with dates. On that, school starts, because I know everybody wants to know that one, school starts promptly at 7:45 a.m. on September 3rd. We are working really hard with a new function on BusRight for parents to receive their transportation assignments digitally. Another way that we are trying to reduce paper here in the district, if we have the technology, we're trying to utilize it. Um, thank you so much to Jenny and Donna in the Transportation Office for working so hard over the summer to make that happen. So those will be going out soon again with a Parents' Square notice, so folks know when to expect that. Other than that, we are busy getting the buildings ready. Things are looking good. We've got practices, practices started athletically, so like this is awesome, greatness. Get ready for school.
And the back to school night is Jennifer, the elementary school practice, or is it remote building?
Um, it's remote building.
One through eight.
Right through eight, sorry.
Right, multiple.
One through eight, okay.
That's it.
Questions for?
You're good. Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, we had the consent items, uh, second agenda, upon recommendation of the superintendent of the board, which is approved, except for all. Upon recommendation, Superintendent Board of Education approved, except or authorizes the following minutes of seven, twenty-one, twenty-five meeting and CSE recommendations. I'll make that motion. Perfect. Uh, all favored? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we'll move on to personnel. Personnel Schedule A, upon recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education approves Personnel Schedule A as per the attached.
I'll make it. No second?
Any discussion on that? Questions, comments, problems?
I'm waiting to comment.
Okay.
Are we good? I just wanna introduce the board to Michelle Papewee. She is our, uh, new special education teacher in the middle school, um, and one of these school class. Um, she is replacing Emily Rose, who is becoming new assistant principal. Michelle, we are so excited for Emily and we are very excited to welcome Michelle. I think now that she's been an absolutely excellent addition to our team. So thank you for coming out and bringing his honor. It's much cooler in the other building. Yeah, all good.
It's our amen.
We really have Aaron here, we turned her off for the news.
He passed. That said, all the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Charlotte's looking at us, are they serious?
Okay. Moving on to new grade design vision, approve first and second readings of board policies. Um, upon recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education waives the requirement for a second reading and approves policy seventeen sixteen use of internet any of the devices during the school day. This, this is a policy that won't go away. Literally, uh, as per the attached.
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Okay, anybody wanna discuss?
I feel like that was good.
What if we, what if we both know?
What?
Then we're out of compliance with the state.
We're gonna talk about it.
We've already put our plan in, but this is a slight adjustment before the state comes after me.
Can we just all unofficially vote no first before we?
I feel like maybe you might want to reclaim what the change is because
maybe?
You precipitated it.
Maybe?
Yeah, I feel like this is you. You brought a special ass.
Yeah.
This is a law.
Because there was, because it was stupid to charge people for a lock, we are now providing locks.
Yes, sir.
At no cost.
At none whatsoever.
Don't charge anything, don't charge anything for laptop, I think charging for a lock is stupid.
However, if you lose it, you have to pay.
Just like if you ruin the laptop, you gotta fix the laptop. Okay? I actually like this though. I mean, I hate the policy, but I like this better.
It feels better.
All right, all favored? We didn't, we should have asked Emma what she thought about it.
You still?
We asked?
The phone policy?
Yes.
I mean, is it needed?
As a student.
But I think it will be beneficial, so.
Okay, why?
Cause I think a lot of kids, like even right now, like I have my phone on the table and they get it strapped during class and they work on it, so.
Have you picked your phone up?
No. Other kids might.
So let me ask you this, so if given the opportunity, do you feel like this, do you feel like this law, this policy, which came from the law, do you feel like it teaches you something or do you feel like it would have been better had we taught you acceptable use versus unacceptable use?
Leading the witness.
Yeah. I mean.
You don't have to give him the answer though, cause he just said he wanted it.
No, no, you don't, no, no, answer.
I feel like teachers already, like if it's on a front touch, they're gonna tell you something, so I feel like the law was like, again, not really completely necessary, but.
It's so diplomatic.
Very good answer, very good answer. All right, well, the next, that's the next policy that they're gonna make is if the superintendent said everybody has to wear the same clothes. You like that? Okay. I'm just kidding. Yeah.
We're all voting.
All right. Uh, all favored?
Aye.
I did? I did? Yeah, definitely did. I just wanted to nail that one, nail that one home. Um, approved shared services agreement, upon recommendation, Superintendent Schools, Board of Education approves the agreement to the Worriesville Central School District for sharing services of social, school social worker as per the attached.
I'll make it.
Questions, discussion?
Are the two days a week, so it's two days B K W, two days Worriesville, and then alternating Fridays, are those days gonna be set in stone, so it's not questionable which days they're gonna be?
Calendar is made and already set to ours own purpose, so people know when to rely on. So this is streamlined, so that individual is, um, similar to how we share physics with Wainsbury. So that individual is currently a Worriesville employee. And we are reimbursing Worriesville for half, central.
Good question. All there? Aye, opposed? None, motion carries quietly. Approved, uh, district-wide safety plan, upon recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, Board of Education approves the two thousand twenty-five. Thank you, district-wide safety plan as per the attached.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Did we have any comments this year? No comments? Over twelve, over twelve. And if the safety plan only becomes a problem, when there's a problem? Okay, all favored? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, approved, uh, B K W Teachers Association M O A, upon recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, Board of Education approves the B K W memorandum of agreement as per the attached.
I'll make that motion. A second?
All right, any discussion on this? We're good? All favored? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, we will approve the Code of Conduct. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education approves the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Code of Conduct. I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any discussion on this? What were the updates?
Oh man, Mr. Ted, what were the updates? So the admin team went through this with a fine tooth comb. And then Mr. Ted went through all forty-three pages of this tremendous document. He, and we like this word, re-paginated the document and reorganized the document, so it actually makes sense. So it will go up on the website and, and folks will be able to click and go to the correct area.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, that's a good job done.
Is there a sign-off? On this?
It's, as, as I told the kids, it's kinda like a vulcan, you enter the doors, you can read to it, but there's a sign-off.
And did we update the spot?
The cell phones?
The cell phone.
Oh, yeah. First thing he did. Look at that, that's a big baby.
Sure, that's it.
It really is.
Good job. Any, any?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of an annoying question, I'm sorry I have to ask this. Page ten, number six, under dress code, do we have to have? Not include halter tops, half shirts? Because let's be honest, kids these days are wearing it all the time in every school. Is that a line that we have to have? Cause if we have it, we feel like we have to enforce it and how do you enforce that?
I feel like there, with everything in our Code of Conduct, we take everything individualized. So I think that there are lines that are sometimes crossed, there are halter tops that are very tasteful and lovely, and then there are halter tops that maybe we need to have a conversation about, using halter tops as an example. It's like any other piece of clothing, it's in there, we don't make a hard and fast rule, but if we need to have a conversation with a student, we're gonna have a conversation with them.
Well, we already have a line that says be safe, appropriate, not disrupt the educational process. So this seems like a hard line to me, to not include halter tops, tube tops, half shirts, shirts missing sides or clothing, clothing that reveals the midriff.
Yeah, I've just looked somewhere.
I don't.
You're saying just keep it general.
Yeah. Just cause if we're not gonna enforce it, I personally don't care what the kids wear.
Same, and I don't think, like, I think that's.
I have no opinion, but I feel like if it's here, you're opening it up for parents to be like, well, that kid yesterday showed their midriff and then my kid got sent home.
And number eleven with the short? Short should be of moderate length as a term. I mean, all, look at.
I think it just should be a general, like, keep it tasteful.
It's correct, I think it's not wrong.
And I didn't like your answer. I didn't like the fact that you said, we look, it's individualized and we, we look at.
She meant like how it's cut.
Yeah, no, I get it, but, but that, that's subject to her opinion. And that leaves the door open to, well, you like, you like Kim, you like Kim more than you like Rebecca, so Kim gets away with.
Right, or they're more, you know, they have better intent than.
So.
I, I.
I agree, I think less.
More is, is in some teachable moments, kids, it's not necessarily that we're coming down on the地域wise, we're just, it's more of a discussion. However, we can keep it general.
I just feel like the language should be more general unless we're going to absolutely enforce, which I don't think we should.
Right, I feel like there's a lot, like even the hoods.
I'm taking.
Stop. Even the hoods, I feel like that's one thing my own children feel in this school district, being a small district, we are not having to be, that's why the cell phone policy doesn't matter to our district. Because we don't need, like, just because a student has their hood on in class, doesn't mean that they, like, they can't focus. Like, that might be something that's a defensive.
Policy now, we have to have them not have their hood on.
And I'm not saying we have to go through and change this, but I just feel like this sounds a little, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Hood is, hood is up over heads, it's a state regulation.
Hood?
Yeah. I know lots of school flowers, but I'm like a little bit stickler for that.
So we let hat?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I don't, I think we have to rip this apart right now, I'm just saying it's very specific in certain areas. And I think it holds our administration to have a lot of conversations that.
And you're, you're that bathing attire as well, too.
Yeah. He just laughed at that.
Are you tearing, what am I wearing, my robe?
I think they meant swim suit.
Not, not bathing in good tub.
I've got my little rubber ducky and my.
Stop it.
My soap butt of rope.
The literal reading of the Code of Conduct. It's a swimsuit, sorry, Mr. Ted.
We could challenge the Policy Committee to look at.
No.
Not a policy.
It's not a policy.
However, shared decision-making can take a look at that throughout the school year.
That's a good, that's a good idea, and, but, but are you sure the Code of Conduct was not in the policy? Yeah?
It's not.
That's a question, that's a question, cause I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
I think it is.
At Bozies, yeah, the Code of, the Stu, the Code of Conduct.
Cause we looked at.
Should be.
I'm gonna ask Yoda on this one. I feel like it's, uh.
Well, it's not, that's fine, but I think it, Marshall should be, shouldn't be. Shouldn't be a policy, I think it should be, it should, should be a policy.
I feel like I like this document to be a living document that our administrators and shared decision-making committees look at every year.
And you, just like we have to update the safety plan every year and policies, in policies, right? There's certain policies that every year we have to re-adopt. At the, at the, at the re-arch meeting or there, or this meeting, right? The Code of Conduct should be adopted as policy.
So you're saying adapt the policy for the Code of Conduct, but still have more hands than just the policy.
Correct. A hundred percent correct.
I don't disagree.
That protects, that, honestly, if it.
It delegates you, the superintendent, the responsibility for sharing the information of the Code of Conduct.
But if you attach this Code of Conduct to the policy, right, isn't that protecting you? Isn't that protecting everybody who has to administer because it's board policy, right? Isn't that the purpose of the policy? Anyway, we can ask, we can ask Aaron, how other school districts handle Code of Conduct, if it's done like that, that's why.
It's, yeah, that it is considered a policy on the D R S enforcement.
I only am asking this cause at Bozies, every year, we adopt.
We reviewed.
We adopt a Code of Conduct as a policy.
It is a policy.
Yes.
And do you go over it or is it a separate committee that reviews it every year?
So at Bozies, there's, there is a policy committee, but, but any policy that's changed, the Policy Committee doesn't necessarily make the change. The Policy Committee just approves the changes that are being brought forward, whether it's by the attorney, whether it's by a committee, that's what it. So the Policy Committee's not going through that saying, oh, we should, you know, do this. It's being brought to that and to review and then that comes to the board. So. I like Nate's idea. All right, so we're, you want, we'll prove it as it, or we'll vote as it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so all favored? Aye. That, that motion carries unanimously. Um, any committee reports, any committees being?
Facilities complaining, but we've kind of already discussed everything.
That's V C.
V C, yes, yep, Jim talked about that. Uh, member comments?
To review.
Oh, the locks, yeah. We did need to.
We could maybe talk about them.
Okay.
Your lock issue.
And going forward, if we bring policies that the Policy Committee has, has, uh, they can report out on that and it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a recommendation to the Superintendent. It can come from the committee, it can come from the committee and therefore it doesn't have to be second, cause the committee has already agreed in. Just this.
I know that, yeah.
Member, any member comments?
One. So stiff as sand, you can break and find themself.
Again, we're doing this?
Yep. So, like, I understand, we're kinda stuck on our weight, but now that we're looking at the portrait of the graduate stuff, that they're gonna be pulling online portfolios and everything. Really, really hopeful that that goes away, just seems like it's a waste of our resources, our community resources, uh, where we want to be in the district, so.
In relation to that comment, maybe, what do you? I, I guess my thought on that is, yeah, as a parent who had to buy all those binders and then they weren't used, it's very frustrating. But maybe if a teacher can give a reason for it, like why they want to use the binders and why they feel it's beneficial to the students, like, I'm not, but, but like, why? Why is it on the school supply list?
Right. I guess for what class, is it for service?
No, but, but we keep having it, so.
Right.
Not keep having it, twelve, this is just twelve years of having it. And every year, yep, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna look into it, it's not looked into it, it's stupid. Again, I'm gonna go to stupid, because it's a, it is a waste of money, those binders are cheap. And you need six of them, first of all, they, and, and you're right, because, because they, they're not used. Why can't the teachers get together at the grade levels and whatever and say, you only need this much of the three-ring binder with a tab? Like, come on, or use the notebook.
If you, if you need a binder.
How do you know they're not having that conversation?
Huh?
How do you know?
Because for twelve years, we sit here and every year, this comes up and it's, it is honestly frustrating.
I honestly, I didn't, I didn't see this, but I saw, I know, I have to go and purchase.
So that, that's just my.
That's what you're saying, there could be a purpose.
I will say, again, are used.
You know, I know some teachers use it as a method of teaching the students how to organize. You know, and then there's.
Yeah.
So is that the reasoning for it? But then I think we also need to start shifting to digital organization.
Yeah.
Because I can tell you, I had two distinctly different students here and the one was very digitally organized and the other one, oh my lord. You know, so maybe that's the way we need to start going instead of applying, but is the, what is the reasoning behind it?
Hello?
The only subject I need to find during last year was math.
And were you required to have one for each class?
It was on the supply list, but.
For each class?
Yeah, I didn't.
And math was? And math was, and math was the only one.
That's kind of the only subject that we still use a lot of.
So that, that, that right there, it's, it's the answer to your question, and it's the answer to Nate's question, and it's the answer to all of this is. Are we just mailing it in that, okay, well, we need binders, and whether they use them or not is on them?
Did you use the whole binder? Like, was it full? Or do you feel you could have put like another subject or two in?
No, I used. There are three total on the supply list for all the teachers, four in the secondary building. Four. Without names, what are the subjects? Math.
All math?
Math, and I think a science.
There's not a stupid.
So that's not whole, though?
There's four total on the whole list.
I'll back down.
I'm not backed down. It's pretty easy to upload that. Like, upload those.
Well, I mean, I have my pencil and paper. Yeah.
But you can upload that into Chromebook. Now you have to work there, you don't have to hold out for that.
But either way, you still have the paper there, so use binder. It's four. At the secondary level, those supplies are suggested. I'm not trying to.
How many minutes?
I don't buy my kid anything until he comes home in secondary schools and I need this binder for this class. And if you don't need it, just return it.
I like.
And it's for.
I like.
Predominantly one subject, so unless your kid is taking multiple classes in that particular subject, you're looking at one.
At least in secondary, the second.
This is my kid's. Right. And there's a couple that are very limited supplies.
Yeah.
One that has none. Yeah.
Well, that's better. Better, it's much better than what was from the first time.
I agree. Secondary has, eighth grade has two, but it depends on, there are two different classes that choose my teacher's name. You need one, essentially, if you write something to the grade. It looks like seven, I'm just saying it doesn't have any.
Okay, getting better.
Five total in the high school. They don't have.
I'm so worried that you're gonna have to have that again.
So you would take that.
It's a win.
It is a win.
It's a win.
But we are having those.
Any other member comments?
No.
To be fair to Nate's point, though.
No, it's true.
And to be fair to Nate's point, I don't wanna go over that, but maybe the conversation could be, saying, incorporate in conversations with some of the teachers, like, hey, you know, these kids could, if they don't wanna carry a binder around, they could upload the documents and put it in there. It's what you're saying, right? You can upload it to your Google.
In the portfolio, it's, they think that. But I also don't want the message to be that we don't feel like teachers are having conversations as a team about what they need and what they don't need, if the list happened, updated.
I, I'm man enough to admit that I overreacted. I draw my stupid statement. Based on the facts that have been presented, it seems like things are much better twelve years later.
And I also feel like, just, you know, if I were a math teacher, which I'm not, when my students turn in a piece of work and I'm writing on it and I want them to do corrections, it's much easier to do on a physical piece of paper that's organized nicely in my binder by unit than trying to go back on the Google Doc that I uploaded with my original work and then doing that.
Well, and now that the students also don't have cell phones in the classroom, it's much harder for them to upload to Google Docs. They would have to do it all at home because they.
No, you can take a picture with your.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, they can't.
With your Chromebook.
Yeah, with your Chromebook.
We've done that before. How easy is that, Emma? Terribly difficult, thank you.
I'll take it back.
I do, this is gonna be a premature comment, but I think it's worth getting out there. We can keep hammering this home. So there, we did get in a, I had a conversation, Nate had a conversation, um, with Bonnie, uh, that came out of facilities. Meeting and talking about things. It looks like, it looks like that. In the year of, uh, coming off a contingency budget, all that stuff that she's done, a great job in finding some, uh, no more of an audit published, but a significant amount of money to, to help replenish reserves that we've spent down. Uh, which I think. That's a testament that hard she's worked. The team has worked, the administrative team have worked and found areas where there, you know, they're, they tightened their belt. They needed to tighten the belt. They did a great job. That resulted in some savings, you know, on coming under budget, which allows us to put money, you know. We have no money in reserve, no money in savings accounts. Now we're going to have someone in savings accounts. Congratulations.
Thanks. I've done it for that. Appreciate everybody's great, Jenny.
Any other member comments? Emma, your turn. Do you have any, anything you'd like to, any parting, parting gifts you'd like to give us? Glad to be here?
Yes.
We're, we're glad to have you. Um, and I don't think there's any unfinished business. Um, so with that, I will, we're two minutes after what Anna has to do with the eight o'clock adjournment meeting, need a motion to adjourn. All right, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody. Me and Jared.